We'll wait to start the meeting when we have a quorum. Quorum. We have a quorum. Call the meeting to your order. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda.
Hello.
Moved by Cass, second by Brian. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion's carried. Do we have public comment today?
Welcome, everyone. If you wish to address the board, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in, please press star nine to raise your hand. It appears we do have one public comment.
Okay, please introduce yourself.
This is Shelby.
Are you guys able to hear me?
Yes, we are.
Hi, my name is Shelby Holloway. I'm not sure if my fellow advocate is here as well, Katie Barnett, but I'm Shelby Holloway. I am a co-campaign director of the Mascots Matter Campaign alongside with Katie Barnett, who is also an inclusion advocate on the Mascots Matter Campaign. We are advocating as individuals with dwarfism and proud members of the disability community to address a critical issue regarding Estreville-Lincoln Central High School's use of the midget mascot. And the term midget has its roots in the freak show era, a time when people with dwarfism were exploited and dehumanized for public entertainment. So the continued use of this term as a mascot perpetuates harmful stereotypes and is deeply discriminatory toward individuals like myself with dwarfism. It is not only dehumanizing, but also violates Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973 and the Americans with Disabilities Act under the Department of Justice by fostering a hostile and exclusionary environment for people like myself and Katie with disabilities. Our Mascots Matter Campaign has garnered a widespread support with over 7,000 signatures on our petition through change.org. And it has actually been featured in the Des Moines Register. I'm not sure if you all have heard about this media attention, but it's reflecting the urgent need for change. All interactions with the superintendent and school board have been dismissive, and they have refused to look into the matter further. There has been an OCR filed already, so just to have that spoken about as well. And we are just wanting to call on the Department of Education to hopefully take action and ensure that Estreville-Lincoln Central High School retires this discriminatory mascot. This is not just about ending the use of a harmful term. It is about protecting, you know, the dignity and rights of individuals with disabilities and fostering inclusivity and creating a respectful environment for all of us. So Katie and I are committed to seeing this through, and we just hope that maybe we can either get resources or guidance from you all. I know normally for a public comment, you guys don't normally comment after the public comment segment, but if there's anything that you can provide either in the chat or I can either drop my email as well in there, that would be awesome. But thank you for even just letting us join your guys' board meeting.
Thank you for your comments, Katie. Do we have any other public comments today?
There does not appear to be any more public comments.
Okay, we'll move on to item three on the agenda, which is rules. First up is Chapter 17, Private Instruction and Dual Enrollment. Thomas?
So just a bit of correction, some of you all might have prior agenda items. This is open enrollment and other enrollment options, not private instruction. It was a drag and drop mistake that I made when prepping the initial agenda. So this is Chapter 17, Open Enrollment and Other Enrollment Options. This is responsive to some statutory changes made in the last legislative section. The first is the legislature reinstated the deadline for filing open enrollment. March for first graders, September for incoming kindergarteners. It also reinstated, and so that is item one of the proposed rule. Item two of the proposed rule has two portions. The first is, if I miss that May, that March or that September deadline, what would be good cause, what would allow me to open enroll? And that reinstates all of the good causes that were in prior versions of this chapter or prior versions of this rule. Item, the second portion of item two implements sort of the interaction of open enrollment and the new law encouraging attendance. So if a child is truant in the receiving district, that puts limitations on their ability to open enroll into a receiving district. And that, those limitations are incorporated by reference. The final item incorporated by reference is transportation. And this is a change from, fairly large change from the status quo. Prior to this last legislative session, there were limits about vehicles crossing into sending district and receiving district, sending vehicles for student transportation across boundaries, unless the two boards agreed. Then House File 2278, which is reflected in item three, creates a skip pattern. So if, and this is incorporated by reference, but for the board's enlightenment, I'm going to read sort of the highlight of this new legislation. So a receiving district with an enrollment of less than 2,000 students may send a vehicle not more than two miles into a resident district. If the pupil's primary resident is closer to the attendance center the pupil will attend in the receiving district than the attendance center that the student would be assigned to in the resident district. So small districts being able to send vehicles not more than two miles into contiguous districts if the receiving attendance center is closer than the child's assigned attendance center in the resident district. The second portion of this allows districts with enrollments, receiving districts with enrollments of greater than or equal to 2,000 to send vehicles regardless of distance into resident districts if the following three conditions apply. The district of residence is less than 2,000 pupils. The district of residence is contiguous to the receiving district, and the district of residence has sent its own vehicles into the receiving district. And then the final piece says that, the final piece of this legislation is reflected in new subrule 1783. The provisions of transportation into another district under this rule are subject to the exceptions established in the statute, and the sending district shall not be responsible for paying transportation subsidies to a parent if the receiving district is providing the transportation. So every change in this proposed rulemaking is implementing statutory terms, either spelling them out or incorporating them by reference. The recommendation is for the board to give notice of intent to amend Chapter 17, and I'm open for questions or comments from members of the board.
Any questions, comments for Thomas?
What if the reason for the truancy at the sending school is what's causing the truancy? What if the reason for the truancy at the sending district of school is what's causing the truancy? Are you sort of, are we saying you're not qualified? You know, what if you weren't going to school? You can't, you can't open and roll if you're truant, and yet what if you weren't going to school because you're being bullied or something? Is that an inconsistency or am I misreading that?
It's, whatever inconsistency that you've recognized is baked into the statute. So it would be the, if bullying is the responsibility of the resident district to address, and the bullying is the reason why the child is not attending. You know, the truancy, the new truancy in attendance encouragement law contains the mechanism to address, but one of those mechanisms is you can't avoid truancy by open enrolling out, similar to if I'm suspended by the receiving, by my resident district or expelled by my resident district, I cannot use open enrollment to avoid the consequences of my suspension or expulsion. So this is reasonable minds could differ about the public policy, but this is baked into the statute itself.
Okay, so we're stuck with that.
We, we are implementing the statute as it's written.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Thomas, aren't there provisions in the statute as far as bullying concerns?
Well, there's provisions in-
For good cause?
Yes.
Yeah, so if there's bullying issuance or occurrences, there's good cause where-
There's good cause, yeah, there's good cause to miss the deadline, but that doesn't necessarily mean there would be an exemption from the attendance law. So the two have to work in harmony.
Right. Other questions or comments for, for Chapter 17? I see that there was a public comment hearing in November, and there was no public comment received at that time.
Correct.
So the recommendation is that we give notice of the intent to amend Chapter 17, which then triggers another hearing, Thomas?
Correct, it will trigger another period of public comment.
I would give notice of our intent to amend Chapter 17.
I would send-
It's been moved by Brian and seconded by Cass. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. All right. On to Chapter 21, Community Colleges.
The subject matter of this particular rulemaking package should be familiar to you because the subject matter experts who are here in the room with me and correct, can correct me if I'm wrong. The subject matter experts did a discussion of potential changes to the community college accreditation process at your meeting in Dubuque in September. So a lot of this should be, as a matter of policy, a refresher. So walking through, starting on page three of the, the board materials, fourth actual sheet of paper, third page of the proposed rulemaking. The first item adds a definition of full-time equivalent enrollment, which sort of standardizes what, the definition of full-time enrollment across the 15 community colleges. Item two provides some updates and flexibilities on three credentials. The associative applied science, the associative applied arts, and the diploma, which allows community colleges that offer these credentials to embed a portion of the general educational requirements into a course in the technical core. So rather than taking a math or a public speaking, I can embed up to three hours of those general educational requirements into a course, an integrated course in the technical core. Item three, bottom of page four, over to the top of page five, indicates or sets forth greater emphasis on outputs rather than inputs. And I particularly direct your attention to the striking of the term strategic planning in the substitution of the phrase institutional effectiveness and outcomes-based planning. So rather than focusing primarily on inputs, what are the outputs for students? What are the outputs for the, for the employers? What are their outputs for the community as a whole? So greater emphasis through the rest of this rulemaking package on outputs rather than measuring of inputs. Item four raises the qualification for developmental education instructors. Developmental education is a key component of these outcomes that we're now asking community colleges to measure. Developmental education is coursework preparatory to credit-bearing coursework. So what might have been a plausible outcome for me, I'm absolutely certain I would have been, I would not have been college-ready for mathematics. And I'm absolutely certain Thomas Mays, if he attended Scott Community College, would have been required to take developmental education course, maybe pre-algebra or something, to get myself up to speed. Prior to this proposed rulemaking, instructors in developmental education courses, there were no credential requirements. This adds a requirement to at least have a bachelor's degree. So if I'm teaching students who need catch-up or acceleration to be college course ready, that sets an expectation that some minimum qualification for instructors in developmental education. Items seven and eight. Item six through eight set up some additional streamlining. This is subsequent to Executive Order 10. The subject matter experts identified additional consolidation, additional resequencing that makes the rules more usable to the end user. One thing that bottom of page seven, your eighth sheet of paper, to the top of page eight, the proposed rules give additional definition to what institutional effectiveness, how that will be measured, and how outcomes-based planning will be measured. Outcomes-based planning, review outcomes data regularly. As part of the accreditation process, we'll complete a self-assessment based on outcomes and determine long-range goals and actions plans based on their goals to obtaining the outcomes. And results of that outcome-based planning will be incorporated into institutional strategic plans. The remainder of the rules package either streamlines the rules, you know, second generation Executive Order 10, including incorporation, in the very last item, incorporating by reference a statutory requirement that had been set out verbatim. There was a public comment from the Community Colleges Accreditation Advisory Committee. The public comment, through the regulatory analysis process, the public comment suggested a lighter footprint or a little bit less detail on what institutional effectiveness and outcomes-based planning is. Because this regulatory analysis process is somewhat new, this is the second round of proposed rules that the state board has considered where the regulatory analysis was a requirement. The, the, the subject matter experts will consider the comments received in the regulatory analysis as if they were given during the public comment period after your notice of intended action. So we, when this matter comes back to you, we will, the department will specifically address in recommendation whether or not the language should be, on institutional effectiveness should be softened. So with that, the department's recommendation to the board is to give notice of intent to amend Chapter 21.
Questions or comments for Thomas?
Not a comment for Thomas, but just to share with the board. The Community College Advisory Committee actually met for the first time this week as well, on Tuesday, and this was a topic for committee review as part of our agenda. And although our role has changed slightly from serving as the Community College Council, we did have a very robust discussion walking through the proposed rules and process. And with our broader committee and their perspectives, they were supportive of the, the rule in its shape as it exists today and are looking forward to the review of the proposed comments once it moves forward into the notice process. So there was no action the committee took. I'm just sharing with you the overview of the conversation.
Thank you for your insights on that with your committee. Other questions or comments regarding Chapter 21? I do like the change in focus from measuring inputs to measuring outputs, wherever that finalizes, I think that's a very healthy direction. So we'll see what, if it's going to be a lighter footprint or not when it gets back to us. I would entertain a motion to give notice of our intent to amend Chapter 21.
So moved.
President Robbins, this is Cindy. I move that we give notice of intent to amend Chapter 21.
All right, Cindy, we will take that motion, and Cass will take yours as a second.
Perfect.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. All right, Chapter 46, Career and Technical Education.
So part of this relates to the action that you just took, and then a couple other parts are clean up from the last legislative session. So the first item is post-secondary program review. So Chapter 46 spans secondary and post-secondary, those, it lives in two ecosystems. And so in your prior action, you gave notice of your intent to provide greater focus on outcomes for community colleges. This, item one in this proposed rulemaking, provides greater focus on outcomes in program review for career and tech ed. You know, the program yields positive return on investment for students. The knowledge, skills, and abilities aligned with industry expectations are being mastered by students. So it's a balance of both inputs and outcomes, with a greater emphasis on outcomes, similar to the last rule making that you acted upon. The second item, item two, page five of the rulemaking, the sixth page of your document, strikes a reference in the regional planning partnerships. It strikes a reference to work-based learning intermediary networks. And this is an outcome of the last legislative session. And then item three concerning career academies amplifies the role of work-based learning or potential to earn an industry-recognized credential or community college credential. So the current career academy rule contains a requirement to include work-based learning. And the proposed rulemaking would maintain work-based learning or the potential to earn an industry-recognized credential or community college credential is defined by Chapter 21. And the industry-recognized credential and work-based learning, there's a great deal of overlap in those Venn diagrams. But this creates some additional ability for career academies to produce high-quality program completers who are ready to go, ready to go, go forth and prosper, I think the word is. So with that, if you have any question, the last item updates the enactment clause. It updates the reference to what this rule is implementing. Chapter 258 having been shifted into Chapter 256B. The last item in the rulemaking is a technical correction. So with that, I am open for questions in the board. The department's recommendation is to give notice of intent to amend Chapter 46.
Okay, thank you, Thomas. Any questions or comments for Thomas regarding Chapter 46? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion to give notice of our intent to amend Chapter 46.
I'll move.
Second.
Who moved first? I missed it. Brian. Okay, moved by Brian, second by Brooke. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign, aye. Motion's carried. All right, Chapter 62, State Standards for Progression and Reading.
So President Robbins, this rulemaking implements House File 2618 from the past legislative session, and I just want to level set some discussion on this particular rulemaking. Want to bust the urban myth, the House File 2618 replaced current law. Or it's, it replaces what has gone before it. No, it amends and it amplifies and it turbocharges, but it doesn't like, well, we're not doing. Two seventy nine sixty eight anymore, we're not doing early literacy anymore, we're doing House File 2618. And I think to the extent that the field practitioners, parents believes that. That's just not the case, it's not the, it's not how 2618 is structured. 2618 amends current law, it doesn't repeal and replace. But to the extent that folks think that we're doing something entirely different or the state has moved in entirely a different direction. No, it is a, it is an add on to a step forward, not a replacement of. How this is accomplished in this rulemaking package, how 2618 is incorporated is similar to everything else that we've done over the past couple of years when a statutory reference is sufficient. That statutory reference is folded in rather than restating the statute as a whole. So item one. Adds the additional notice to parents, so there is a notice to parents required by current law. There's a new notice to parents required by 2618. This incorporates those, that new requirement by reference. So parent notice implementation and support, item two. Parent notice involvement and support. This consolidates prior language by items A and B that are struck through. Those are actually pulled up into the statutory reference in the underscored text immediately preceding them. So this provides with parents with. The current written notice is required in, under the preexisting law as well as written notice of any student in kindergarten through grade six who is not reading proficiency. The student's level of reading or reading readiness shall contain a description of the parent's regarding his ability to request that the student be retained in grade. For the subsequent school year. That parent notice would then create an option for the parent to have the child retained in grade. Item three. Sets out services beyond third grade under the preexisting law which covered grades kindergarten through three. We had to, the rules had to address what happens in grades four, five and six. Now grades four, five and six are incorporated or covered by House File 2618. This creates the, the requirement to continue to progress measure those students. Since students now take in grades four through six, the Iowa assessment of. Iowa statewide assessment of student progress. If a student is not proficient on the ISAS spin reading. The way to exit that status is to become proficient on the ISAS. So this creates a, a decision rule for classroom teachers, parents, building administrators. ISAS spin, ISAS out. If I am proficient on a screener. But not proficient on ISAS. I have to then become proficient on ISAS to exit this status. And the reason for that is the screeners predict to ISAS outcomes. And so if a student is not identified as reading proficiently on the ISAS, the student remains identified until the student attains proficiency on ISAS. And that would continue beyond. That, that would continue through the end of sixth grade. There are some. There may be some implementation questions, I'm curious as to what public comment the department might receive on these questions. However, during the regulatory analysis, the department received no public comment. I'm open for questions, the department's recommendation is to give notice of intent to amend chapter 62.
Questions or comments for Thomas? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to give notice of intent to amend chapter 62.
I would move.
It's been moved by Cass.
Second, by Cindy.
Okay, second by Cindy, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. All right, chapter 79.
The standards for practitioner administrator preparation programs, this was a very active space in the last general assembly. There are four statutes listed on the preamble that this proposed rulemaking is implementing. Going to walk through them. The first is a requirement that. Candidates in certain endorsement areas take the foundations of reading assessment. Criterion reference well established. Candidates have to take, candidates don't necessarily have to pass, but they at least have to take. The, the check on quality is the practitioner prep program analyzes individual candidate data. So for all of its candidates that took the foundations of reading assessment. What was the pass rate, what was the success rate? And if the pass rates, top of page four, the fifth sheet, if you printed out. Printed these out, if the pass rate for the foundations of reading assessment is below 90%. This triggers a requirement for the practitioner prep program to reflect and plan. How, why is it below 90%? What are we going to do to improve the pass rate? So foundations of reading, then the, in the candidate pass rates in the aggregate becoming part of the practitioner prep programs self assessment. So items two. Item two on page four. Is some technical correction regarding teacher interim preparation programs. And. Addresses the situation of what happens if a candidate during their year of teaching with the school drops. Drops out or fails to complete the program. This requires the program to immediately notify the Board of Educational Examiners. The top of page five. Sets out the full time experience as a student teacher. Fourteen weeks in duration during the teacher candidate's final year in the teacher prep program. The very next item incorporates some allowance for folks with prior experience as a para educator or a substitute teacher. This requires practitioner prep programs to give allowance for that prior work to, as credit towards those 14 weeks. Item five, middle of page five. Does, does a couple of things for all teachers in sub rule 7915 three. Literacy instruction and practical application. All teacher, all candidates to demonstrate competency in literacy, including reading theory, evidence based reading strategies. Competency in responsive teaching and the literacy curriculum shall include evidence based reading instruction. And shall not include instruction or practical application on teaching foundational reading that incorporates the three queuing method. The. Sub, the paragraph on the top of page six is more specific to teachers, teacher candidates in a specific endorsement area. In those teacher candidates in that specific endorsement area. That instruction shall not include instruction or practical application on three queuing.
Board member Kane, I apologize for interrupting, it sounds like there's some feedback, do you mind going on mute? Thank you.
Sound check? Better, great. So just elevator speech. All candidates, scientific, evidence based instruction and reading, a little, much more detail for candidates in specific endorsement areas that where reading is sort of mission critical. But in neither case shall three queuing be used. As instruction or practical application on teaching foundational reading. I had to educate myself on what three queuing is. Because to a layperson like me, it sounded like it should make sense. The three Qs are, does it make sense, does it sound right and does it look right? Looking at the pictures in the book or does this sound right? And from my understanding as a layperson, three queuing teaches you how to learn the meaning of words. It doesn't tell you how to read. So it makes you a proficient guesser, not a proficient reader. Can I infer that this is a horse because I saw a picture of a horse? Oh, it starts with a P, maybe it's not horse, maybe it's pony. I just guessed the word pony, I didn't decode the word pony, I didn't read it. And three queuing might be a great way to learn vocabulary, but it's not a good way. It's not a good way to learn to read if you didn't already have those foundational components. So I can still teach the, I can still, there still might be some space in practitioner prep programs where three queuing is used, but not as this is how you teach students how to read. Because you're not decoding, you're not developing phonemic awareness, you're not doing the essential components of reading through three queuing. And I use three queuing to just do that, that little blurb, I guessed on what all of those words meant. Do I know what they mean? No, but I, the three queuing that one is taught in law school taught me to be proficient guessers about what those words meant. I don't know if I could use them in a sentence otherwise or explain them. But that's the elevator speech on why three queuing is specifically addressed in the way it is in these rules. It doesn't teach children how to read, it just makes unproficient readers better guessers. And so the remaining portion of this chapter. Technical corrections. And some things that the practitioner prep program identify, program experts here at the department identified is sort of second generation corrections after executive order 10. So there were a couple of public comments during the regulatory analysis. Again, similar to the public comment that was received during the regulatory analysis for chapter 21. The department will react, will deem those as part of the public comment received. After notice of intended action. And we'll bring recommendations to you at your February meeting when these rule, when we make recommendations regarding adoption and filing. But there were two broad classes of public comment. The first broad class of public comment was around the 90% success rate. For the foundations of reading assessment, too high, too burdensome. The counter argument is the stakes of children, teachers not being adequately prepared to teach reading is too high. So balancing the competing public policy concerns, that's broad. Question one, or broad comment one, broad comment two was let us use three queuing. Three queuing might be a good way for this particular learner to learn how to read. There, the evidence in those public comments was largely anecdotal, well, this worked for this particular child. Do you know if it was three queuing or something else? Testimonials are the, sort of like the least favored way to do public policy, even though they are the most persuasive. But those were the two broad classes that you can expect. Some more in depth discussion when these rules come back to you. Tentatively at your February meeting, but. With that, I'm open to questions. On this particular rulemaking, I'm, I'm particularly open to correction from the practitioner prep folks who are in the room with, with me. And with the director, but with that, the boards, the recommendation to the board is to give notice of intended action to amend chapter 79.
Okay, questions or comments for Thomas on this chapter?
Hey, Thomas, can you remind me, it probably, I didn't have time to look at the entire statute, but can you remind me what kind of credit towards the 14 weeks requirement? Individuals that are in the teacher registered apprenticeship program get? And is, I'm assuming that's in a different section that's not being amended?
So prior experience as a substitute teacher or a part, or a para educator. If I'm, it's a fraction of the 14 weeks, I believe it's up to six. It's not all of the 14 weeks, but it's a fraction of.
That they, they are not required to do the 14 weeks, they do some fraction, is that what you're saying?
That's my understanding.
Okay, that was my understanding as well, but I just wanted to verify it since we were talking about.
Just to, it's really important to note, because I know that this has been a common point of potential confusion that there is no change or reduction in, in the student teaching requirements. However, it is recognizing and providing the flexibility to recognize the expertise attained in qualifying work experiences. Miriam, did you have anything to add to that?
I think for Director Townsend, I think that her purpose is. TPRA program and those candidates usually have served as a para educator in a classroom of appropriately licensed teacher which would fit under the requirement of this rule. And they can count up to even 10 weeks of their prior experiences. Or up to 14 weeks of prior experiences as a para educator. If it has met the student teaching requirements like Director mentioned. That if it has been in a classroom of appropriately licensed teacher in appropriate grade level content area and they have received that prior experience in other settings in other times. We grant them that credit for the experience they have done in the past.
And is that limited to just para educator experience or, or those that are just going on a teacher track?
So the ones who are going through the teacher track also have served as a para educator in this program. There is also an opportunity for substitute experience to count towards this if it has happened in a setting where a appropriately licensed teacher is available. It's not a common situation where somebody substitute and an appropriately licensed teacher is in the same classroom. However, there are some districts who have had this model in mind and they have done that co teaching opportunity with their para educator. And they have served as substitute and those substitute hours can count towards their student teaching.
So if I understand what you're saying correctly, Miriam, it is the, it's basically their prior para educating, education experience that will get them some credit towards the 14 weeks. But the two years that they're in the, or how many every years they're in the teacher program as an apprentice? Will that in and of itself get them any credit towards these, under this prior experience rule?
The two hours that they are taking for the RTI pieces, if you're talking about the related. Training and the instruction that they are participating, that doesn't count towards student teaching or clinical experience. Because it's not.
Right, right.
But I'm. You're correct in that their para educator experience, the fact that they're serving as a para educator throughout this program. That's the experience that counts towards their student teaching.
Okay, I, you know what, I'm going to have, I'll, I'll follow up with you offline, I don't want to hijack the conversation. I just thought this was a good opportunity to ask, but I'll, I'll talk with you offline, thanks, Miriam, thank you.
Thank you.
So I think the bottom line is that nothing in these rules would provide greater requirements to folks who are currently participating in the TPRA program under the current law. It adds additional flexibilities to the current law, so if. So, and we would, I speak like I know what I'm talking about here. But would appreciate the opportunity to follow up after today's board meeting.
And Thomas, just to add on to that, if there are any additional questions, there are comprehensive FAQs on the Department of Education's webpage, talking through the implementation of some of these relevant provisions. And again, just want to restate that it is a recognition of high-quality work-based learning experiences that meet the student teaching requirements that are so meaningful to future educators. So thank you, Thomas.
Okay, other comments or questions regarding chapter 79? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to give notice of intent to amend chapter 79.
I would move, John. So move to give consent for chapter 79.
Is there a second?
Second, Cindy Dees.
All right, moved by Cass, second by Cindy. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. I think that's the last item on the agenda, Thomas.
Yes, it is. Expect to see these five rulemaking packages as well as the two rulemaking packages you noticed at your November meeting. Expect to see all these seven at your February meeting.
All right, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much for your time and coming in online in December to get this important work done. Everybody have happy holidays, travel safe, enjoy family and friends. We'll see you next year. Bye.
Bye. Thank you.